Okay, good evening. The date is April 7th, 2025, and the time is 6:15. I hereby call to order the workshop of the City Council of Groveland. Mike, go ahead and take it over.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. This is the second workshop to build greater operational understanding and awareness on behalf of the council, and also review the budget for the fire department and provide an opportunity to ask any questions as we move into the next fiscal year. With that, because Chief is very well aware of the time constraints and has tailored his presentation as such, I'll turn it over to him.
Could we do roll call real quick, please?
Jenny, will you please take the roll?
Yes. Mayor Keith Keigho.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Jo Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Feig.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Radzick excused absence. City Manager Mike Heine.
Here.
City Attorney Anita Drossi Carver.
Here.
Sergeant-at-Arms Chief Sean Ramsey.
Yes, ma'am.
City Clerk Virginia Wright here.
Thank you. And Jenny, would you like to go ahead and read the end of the record, Mr. Radzick's email?
The email received April 7th, Councilmember Radzick. "I will not be at the workshop this evening, but I wanted to give my opinion on the fire department's budget. Believe we should establish a full-time equivalent model for the future, but for right now, we should go with the current level of service. I think we need to start planning for the extra staff that will be needed for the new station. We should make sure that our emergency services personnel have all the tools they need to be able to service our residents and protect life."
Thank you. Again, Mr. Heine, do you want to turn it over?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Mr. Heine, thank you so much for the opportunity to allow me to tell you a little bit about the fire department and also have our finance people go over the financial aspect side of it. You will know, to be cognizant of your time, this has been cut down extensively, so if you'd like a copy later of the hour-plus-long version, I'll certainly provide that. Before we get started here... Or maybe not. Okay. Let's see moving forward here. All right. So we'll go ahead and we're going to start off with the financial aspect of this first here.
Good evening, everyone. So we wanted to just review some of the budget impacts for the FY 2025-2026 fiscal year. So currently, the fire assessment covers forty percent, forty-six percent of the basic life support, fire costs and fire-related costs, meaning that the general fund is still responsible for covering the remaining fifty-four percent. The fire union contract was negotiated last year, which included a ten percent wage increase that takes effect on October 1 of 2025. And then FRS pension costs are currently at thirty-two point seven-nine percent, which is the twenty-twenty-four rate. Usually, they look at adjusting that if they do in July, by July 1 of this year. So just kind of keeping those things in mind, we'll go through to the next slide. And on the next slide, you'll see here it shows I've given the fiscal activity for fiscal year 2023, which was at approximately five point five million dollars, just over five million dollars. For 2024, the total activity was six point five million. For 2024-25 budget, your budget was at nineteen million two seventy-nine, which does include capital as well. And year-to-date through February, we have spent five point one million dollars of the fires' budget year-to-date. So for the proposed 2025-26 budget, you're looking at approximately an eight point seven-three percent increase. So with that, that is reflecting the ten percent wage increase per the union contract for union members. No increase for the non-union members, a forty-three percent increase in workers' compensation, and a ten percent estimated increase in benefits. So your medical, dental, et cetera, with that kind of stuff. When you start looking at operating expenses, it's approximately a seventy-five K decrease, which actually that kind of equates out almost exactly to the updated fire assessment study that we have in this year's current budget for Binesh to do the fire assessment study update. For capital outlay, there is a decrease of approximately two point eight million in capital outlay that is due to, well, obviously, a reduction in casts, because you would have the ladder truck that was hitting this year. You have the, a portion of the fire station that is also coming before the council for this year. And we'll have a slide a little bit later here that'll kind of outline what those capital requests are for FY 26. You also see a hundred and seventy K decrease in debt service that is attributed to a one-time charge that would be in FY 25 for the loan for the fire station that is coming to council. I believe in May with the final lot-to-exceed cost?
First meeting in May, yes.
First meeting in May, okay. So then here is that proposed capital for FY 25-26. And Chief, please feel free to jump in here. I'll kind of jump through them, but you can give a little bit of background on any of them if they have questions as well.
Sure. I'll go ahead and start with number one. And just please understand, this is a request that, since it has been placed in the budget three or four years ago, has always been in there only under the circumstances that we may obtain a grant for this. This was not to be city-funded in any way, shape, or form, but again, one hundred percent through the grant. Now, I should bring to your attention, we are looking at a combined jurisdictional training center with the City of Clermont. They do have sixteen acres that has just now been transferred from one of their former departments that moved to a new location, and that sixteen acres was given to them. And it actually just happens to be on the Clermont-Groveland property line, if you will. So between the City of Mineola, Clermont Fire Department, Groveland Fire Department, we will certainly be looking for those combined efforts for grants to collectively work together for a South Lake Regional Training Facility that even the county and anybody who wanted to come to could use as well. When it comes to the cardiac monitor replacement, just to let you know, this is a little bit of an increase in price for cardiac monitor that has been previously, the forty to forty-five thousand we have been budgeting. The cardiac monitors that we currently use, they're at about an eight to nine, sometimes you can get ten-year service lifetime. We're coming to the end of those service lifetimes for this particular model. It didn't make any sense to purchase the old model that we're going to have for seven, eight, or nine more years after this, so there was an increase in the current, for the current model that is coming out. The Phoenix G2 Station Alerting System, this is a huge one. Since we've been in the new public safety facility, the alerting system that was originally brought for that, not only our Station 1, but Station 2, of course, Station 3 was not in the works at that point, has never worked. It has failed us miserably. Attorney Drossi is working on a resolution with the company for us on that. And that would be some funds hopefully will recuperate. Matter of fact, half of that, eighty thousand, if not more. But that would work in cohesiveness with the county's new system. Everybody in the county, all the fire stations are all going to this Phoenix G2 system. They're currently putting their services in and everything in the county. We know this will work and alert all of our fire stations properly. Station 3 construction speaks for itself. Battalion Chief Ninety-five replacement. As you're aware, it was just about three and a half years ago. We never had battalion chiefs before. That's your shift commander. That is the person that oversees all the lieutenants, all of the stations for twenty-four hours, whether it's on a weekend, holiday, or whatever. That vehicle, even though it's about three and a half years old, has had significant mileage put on it. I believe it's up in the eighty thousand mile range already. It has a whole command setup in the back of it, and we don't have anything to put them into when it breaks down or is out of service. So this would give us an opportunity to put this vehicle that's been heavily weathered over the last four years here into a reserve status that when we have an issue or during storm instances where we put two battalion chiefs on duty, we can put one in one vehicle and we can put one in the other, and all the command setup is ready to roll. And of course, Engine Ninety-four replacement was budgeted in this current year. We have pushed it down to next budget year, just given all the other things we have going on. So hope that helps.
That's perfect. Thank you, Chief. Alrighty. With that, we're going to go in, because incorporated in our lovely fire department is also our emergency management department, which Chief just kind of touched on a little bit with the vehicles. So our emergency management department, you can see that for FY 24, there was not a huge amount of activity in there. For 25, we budgeted, for FY 25, we budgeted thirty thousand nine hundred. We have currently spent eight thousand forty-seven for emergency management. And for FY 2026, we're looking for thirty-three thousand. So the changes in that are actually due mostly that we're budgeting it kind of across the same as what we did for FY 25. The only increase you would see there is the general liability insurance that we do take and break out across the departments when we budget for that. So not anything huge that we're looking for. And that's really just kind of for emergencies, just storm, anything like that kind of stuff that we might have to deploy our guys to go help out for stuff if we activate the EOC.
Sure. So emergency management, as you know, Chief Thiemann is our emergency management coordinator. We have been preparing. We have an EOC, but we weren't necessarily prepared, if you will. So this allows for food storages, reserve storages, when we have to bring people in. It also allowed for additional radios, which we may need to purchase some more of portable radios to be able to hand out to facilities and public works when they're out in the field, so we can actually talk to them. Because cell towers could be down, other things could happen, but at least line of sight for several miles, we can actually communicate with each other by one of these radios. So, and those are anywhere from five, six, seven thousand dollars apiece for these radios.
So with that, I will turn it back over to Chief.
Okay, thank you. There's one thing that April mentioned, that the increases to the budget did not include administrative salary increases. Not only is administration very grateful to Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council for approving the budget that had come up here recently for the field, and I know the field is ecstatic, that they will now be in alignment with the other departments surrounding them. One of the concerns I have, because I've had an instance where two of my people were being vetted by outside agencies, is that we have not kept up with internal administrative salaries. So this is something that I'm hoping that we could look at maybe potentially during the budget year here, maybe a part of the percentage, and then absorbing the rest of it when the field crew gets their ten percent come ten-one of twenty-five. So I think it's something that has to seriously, because there are serious discrepancies between the current salaries of, say, my deputy chief and my division chiefs and my fire marshal compared to the surrounding agencies. And we're not talking little discrepancies, we're talking some big discrepancies. So I'd appreciate if, just bringing that to your attention, and we'll work with finance and city manager to look at that a little further here. Here's my organizational chart. As you can see, the fire chief to the deputy chief, my administrative assistant, obviously, Kristi Higginen. We say that Kristi is really the one in charge of the fire department. She keeps us all together there. But our division chief of life safety and community outreach is just invaluable as far as all the things they do. That's not just what he does. There's a lot of logistical things that happen, from uniforms to truck fixes and repairs, which are endless, preventive maintenance truck repairs. And then the fire marshal also falls under his purview. My division chief on the other side of training and EMS, the extensive work that he does to make sure that our people meet ISO requirements, which by the way, even community outreach is part of the ISO requirement as well. And then, of course, we have our three battalion chiefs in A, B, and C shift, three lieutenants on each shift, nine lieutenants, and then we have nine driver engineers. These are actually certified, state-certified, promoted people to drive these very expensive pieces of equipment that hold a lot of expensive equipment on them. And these people are certified to pump and drive these, which was something we never had here in the City of Groveland previously, nor did we have battalion chiefs. And then I have twelve firefighters. This is a downturn of three firefighters from three years ago where we had fifteen firefighters. And that's something, not this upcoming budget year, but maybe in a future year, we can revisit that. Oops. Okay. All right. So quickly, our department overview. We have three stations. So as you know, we have twenty-four thousand residents. We cover every emergency you can imagine that could conceivably come up, even if we are not necessarily trained, for instance, to pull a snake out of a house. We will either, depending on the kind of snake, we will find the resources to remove that snake. We will mitigate that scene. We will not leave there until the scene is under control. So again, our three fire stations downtown here, we have not only Battalion Ninety-five, but we have our Marine Ninety-five. We have our event unit that could also be used for search and rescue out in the woods. So it's not just a fancy little cart that we use to drive through the woods, but it could also be used for search and rescue through the woods where you normally wouldn't be able to get a bigger vehicle or clearly a fire truck through. So, but by something, what we call cross-trained, because we have every fire truck is a firefighter and a paramedic or an EMT. There's at least one, if not two, paramedics on every fire truck. Everything on that fire truck, and this is not widely known, this is a question we get asked time and time again, why does the fire truck come to my house? The fire truck comes to your house because it's an ambulance as well as a fire truck. It just does not transport. All the same medications, airway devices, cardiac monitors, invasive medications, everything is exactly identical. What's on the ambulance is also in this fire truck. So that's important for everybody to know. And of course, here is a list of Station 1, 2, and 3. This is our locations of where they are at. Station 1, of course, being downtown here, Station 2 on Cherry Valley Trail, and of course, Station 3, they're in the industrial park, Christopher C. Ford Park, and that is our temporary station. But you can see there is the design below for the new station. And Mayor, you'll be happy to know that we are working with the Community Development or CDBG for potentially a good sum of money that could be placed towards this new fire station. So we're excited and we're going to pray for a good outcome there. All right. So what I'd like to do here is get into some of the data for the department. We ran, this is calendar year 2024, three thousand seven hundred ninety-four dispatches to calls for service. Three thousand one hundred and eight of those were unit response, individual unit response. So this wasn't Engine Ninety-four and Engine Ninety-six both going to the same fire. These were individual actual calls. And then, of course, two thousand four hundred ninety-two individual unit responses just inside the city boundaries of Groveland. Six hundred sixteen of those calls were individual unit responses to Groveland. We have an inter-local service boundary agreement with the county, as well as mutual and automatic aid to Clermont, Mineola, and even with the county for areas of Mascot and so on. So, out of those six hundred sixteen calls, I think it's important, when we're not inside the city, I think it's important for you folks to know, what are we doing? Well, a hundred twenty of those calls were in the City of Mascot, Clermont's ISBA. This is the ISBA that they have with Lake County four times last year. And depending on the call, we will go to help out surrounding jurisdictions when it is a serious call or a higher acuity call. That is important to know, as they will do for us. The City of Clermont proper, we did mutual or automatic aid sixty-six times. Leesburg, now, everybody thinks, we know Leesburg is quite a ways up there, but we're talking about the Leesburg ISBA with the county, which is more along the fifty, or I'm sorry, the twenty-seventh corridor up where Christopher C. Ford Park is and just to the north up twenty-seven. The City of Leesburg themselves, seven calls, and there's a variety of reasons why that could have happened. We could have been up there for training, which we have to do our ISO training up there. And then, of course, the City of Mineola forty-three times. All right. So all of those calls, what does that mean? Well, here's a breakdown of those calls. As you can see, four hundred forty-four, these are traffic collisions. We run more car accidents than anything, two hundred seventy-three year falls, and so on and so forth. I won't read all of these to you, but you can kind of get a breakdown of what we've actually ran during 2024. All right. Now, this is a little bit of a subjective slide, but I think it is important because we cover some valuable properties here in the city. Pre-incident value of fires that we went to, twelve million, almost twelve and a half million dollars. Out of that twelve and a half million, because of our response matrix, our response times of getting there, we were able to keep the fire loss to a hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars. So estimated property value saved, as you can see, twelve million three hundred thousand. Now, this is, again, a little bit of subjective slide, but it does come in to let you know that our folks are really doing a pretty good job getting there quickly and putting the fire out and mitigating that scene as quickly as possible. All right. So a little bit of some other stats. This is important. These are almost like bonus points, because ISO Insurance Services Offices will be here in just three weeks. They come every four to five years. Community outreach is a big one. So we held thirty-four community outreach programs delivered to the community. These are not just little programs. We're talking programs where there's hundreds and hundreds of children and adults there. Sixteen hours spent throughout the year just putting these, developing these programs and putting them together, hundred seventy-six point five hours spent on delivering these programs to the community, and thirty-one hundred children and adults were actually reached through those programs. All right. Training and division stats. Now, remember, per ISO, every firefighter is required specific training. And when you look at all the hours that we're doing here, eight thousand two hundred twenty-nine of these are firefighting and other non-EMS-related training. That's a lot of hours. We are literally superseding anything that ISO would require of us. And then, of course, we're required also on a shiftly basis is to do, you know, EMS training. And last year, we did one thousand five hundred sixty-six hours of EMS training. And I have to tell you, this is what's been recorded. When we have paramedics or paramedics on provisional that are doing training with their officers and other members within the station, sometimes not all of that is captured. So this is the minimum, if you will, of training hours, which is, for our size department, this is an enormous amount of training hours, pretty proud of these people. All right. Fire prevention and inspection. This is Fire Marshal Frank. Three hundred eighty-six annual inspections, seventy-six re-inspections, and there's reasons for re-inspections, seventy-two construction change of occupancy inspections, two hundred thirty construction plans sets reviewed. This is all the new stuff coming down the pipe that he actually has to review in advance. If you've ever been in Frank's office, you'll see these huge computer screens. They look like big screen TVs, and he lives in the dark in there, because he's always looking at these screens when he's in there. Fifty-two site plans reviewed. Of course, you know, we do fire inspections for the City of Mascot. We have an agreement which they reimburse us for. Last year was only seventeen of those. They've actually cut back on annual inspections. That was their prerogative. But seventeen Mascot inspections and eleven Mascot plan reviews. So in total, eight hundred forty-four inspections and plan reviews. Just so you know, there's departments that do not even do annual fire inspections. The county are friends. A lot of great things are happening in the county, and they're actually just starting to do annual fire inspections. All right. So I'm going to end with just these few slides to tell you about the wonderful Insurance Services Office, ISO, that goes around and rates and does an audit on every fire department in the United States every four to five years. It's on a rotation. They don't do everybody, all those departments at one time. Obviously, they're on a rotating basis every four to five years. So we know this is kind of an organization that it's very difficult to get information from, but the end result is, this organization, their outcome does determine your liability insurance, homeowner's insurance rates, as well as your commercial insurance rates. So this is an organization that we have to have good information for. We have to satisfy them, and we have to make sure we're doing the things leading up to them coming here that are going to get us the most points as possible. So how is each area rated? 50% is awarded to the overall health of the department. Training is a big one of these. The number of firefighters and the ability to deploy. Our deployment status is a huge one. How many people we can actually deliver to a fire scene. And of course, maintenance and testing of pumps and other critical equipment. We have to do pump testing of the fire trucks. We have to do ladder testing. We have to do hose testing. And all this stuff has to be documented. We can't just say we did it. There actually has to be documentation that all this stuff actually passed. 40% is awarded to water supply. This is another huge one. Number of fire hydrants. Where are these fire hydrants located? Do we have water to all corners of this city to be able to put out a fire if necessary? We do have the ability to work with the county and our surrounding departments to bring tankers and other fire trucks to deliver water, but when you have a fire hydrant, that's a lot better than having just a set, you know, number of gallons of water that you're going to burn through here pretty quickly. These hydrants also have to be flushed, and they have to be maintained, every one of them annually. You would not believe the things that come flying out of fire hydrants. We had a bolt about six inches of, Fire Marshal Frank has it in his office, that came flying out of the fire hydrant. The purpose of flushing these is to keep this, these systems clear and so forth and to keep that stuff prevented from coming into the fire truck. Would have been devastating to a fire pump. The amount of water available after daily consumption. This is why when we have ISO come here, we will have members from Woodard and Kern. We will have Mr. Fish and some other members there to assist us to answer these questions. A lot of the forms are filled out in advance for ISO, but we will have them in attendance as well. And the amount of water available for fire suppression after that daily consumption. All right. 10% is awarded for the emergency communication system. This is the emergency communication system that does dispatching for the entire county fire rescue. How well a fire department receives and responds to emergency calls, the number of call takers for the 911 center, everything from the time they receive the call to the time the call is put out, the health of that system is imperative to our good score as well. And then 5.5% is awarded to community risk reduction. These are considered bonus points, and as I stated, the community outreach is vital. And it's community outreach to our most critical categories of people, the very young and the very old. These are the people that really we need to hit, we need to reach. All right. So ISO evaluates more than 46,000 departments, and we're in the top eight and a half percent of that, believe it or not, with a rating of a 3, 3X. And that is a public protection classification rating of 3, 3X. The first number applies to the properties within five road miles of a fire station within 1,000 feet of a credible water supply. That's your fire hydrant. That's why the more fire hydrants out there, the better the score. The second number applies to properties within five road miles of a fire station, but beyond the 1,000 feet of a credible water supply. So that's how that 3, 3X comes to be. Now, we've received 70.86 points. You can see, we barely just got into a 3 the last time, but I am confident that all the good work that my team has been doing here, and not just my administrative team, the field crews, I'm confident that we will be a much more solid 3. Obviously, I don't, I can't control the audit when the gentleman is there doing it, but once he checks all his boxes and he has all his information, it gets sent up to the northeast, and somebody then compiles all this information and months later spits out a number. But knowing what wasn't done before and what is done now, it's going to be hard to see that we cannot be deeper into a more solid 3. Again, we are not even one point into a 3 now. All right. So how can we stay or improve? This is important. The deployment analysis, we only received 2.48 of a possible 10 points. Now, 10 points doesn't necessarily equate to 10 points at the very end, but in that particular category, we only got 2.48 points of a possible 10. So this has to do with response times and the number of people that you can get there. Obviously, the more people you have, the more people you can get there quickly, your score is that much better. Training. There's no doubt. We got 2.38 points of a possible nine points in training. We have definitely, for each of these categories, facility training, which we go up to Leesburg to do, company officer, or company training, officer training. I cannot see why we haven't maxed out all of these points. So we'll certainly see when he gets here. But training is a big part of this, and this is an area where we can make up a lot of points to solidify our 3. Water supply. From the day I got here, myself, Chief Theeman, Smith, and Walsh, we have been working with Woodard and Kern and our folks to, it's really been a good partnership to make sure that every single one of these fire hydrants have been maintained, the gaskets are lubed, they're painted, that they look good. And of course, the color of the hydrant makes a difference, too. That allows us to know what, how much water we can actually get out of one of these fire hydrants. Not to mention, a quarter of them annually have to be what they call two hydrant flow tested. That means you have to open this one up downstream, you have to open up another one, and then you need to take readings to actually see a legitimate number of water that could actually come out, because water's still flowing while you're using this one. So this has been done for the last three or four years now, and we have all that data that we can put on a flash drive. This is a flash drive, by the way, a little firefighter, and we just hand it to the ISO guy, and he'll be very happy with that. And of course, community risk reduction. We received just about half, a little more than half of the points there, and we think we're doing pretty well in that area as well. All right. Not bad. Mr. Hyde, you okay? I was getting the I, I saw, but I was, I knew I was getting to the end. Folks, any questions that may answer for you, just let me know, or for our wonderful finance folks.
All right. Let's go around. Judith, do you have questions?
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, Chief Carroll. So we're talking about coming up for this ISO. How do you think we can achieve getting where we need to be this year with that?
So clearly, there's nothing that we were going to do last minute here that was going to change Anything Counts, woman. It's what we have been doing to prepare for this over the five years that I've been here, Chief Theeman's been here, and working with the field crews. They needed clear direction on what we needed. For instance, facility training hours. We got zero points for facility training hours. Per ISO, facility training hours means it has to be an approved training facility. It has to meet their guidelines. It has to be fenced in. It has to have certain things that you can train with on that property, and it has to be secured. And the thing is, this wasn't being done previously. How do we get it done now? We drive a fire truck all the way up to Leesburg to get it done. They're gone for the day. That's, we only do that one truck at a time, and we make sure the other ones are strategically moved around to make sure they're handling all the calls, you know, to the best they can. I can justify sending a unit out of, you know, the area for training. Of course, can't justify sending them to an area to go have pizza for somebody's birthday, right? So we do this strategically. If things start looking like it's getting really busy, we'll send them back. But this is where having a regional training facility close by is going to be a game changer, not only for Groveland, but for Claremont and Mineola.
Amy Jo.
Questions? So started beginning. You said you had nine battalion chiefs, nine lieutenants, and nine drivers engineers, right?
Three battalion chiefs, one per shift.
Three, my bad. I wrote down the wrong number. I got you.
Yes, ma'am. Then there's three lieutenants for three stations.
Right.
A, B, and C shift, and then nine drivers as well.
Right. So there's only one per shift. So how do we cover sick and vacation times for those guys?
This is an issue that just came up recently again. So right now, we are one person to the plus on manning fuel, above minimum staffing. We need 10 people to run a shift and have three people on a fire truck, each fire truck. Currently, we're only one person above that. So the way we currently handle that is we allow one person off at a time. Of course, that presents some issues, too, when people say, I gather up all this time, and then, you know, after I get to a certain number, you take it away from me, and I can't, I can't use it, but I can't. So working with the city manager and discussing this with the union leadership as well, we're going to work to see how, on a trial basis right now, how we can open up that second PTO slot, which doesn't happen often, I have to let you know that. It's not often that we have two people, when there's only 10 people on a shift, it's not that often that two people want off on the same day all the time. As long as it won't create, if we don't use overtime for the first position, which we will always hire overtime for the first position, because if somebody wants off, you've got to let these people use their time. So we have one person extra. If it doesn't cause overtime, fantastic. If another person wants overtime, we will hire overtime for that second position on a trial basis for the next 60, 90 days, and then we're going to bring all that data back to the city manager and see whether we can continue this or not.
Okay. Because it looks to me like you don't have enough people. I'm just saying. That was a concern. Also, what does the emergency management budget cover?
So we, emergency management is just not hurricane season. I mean, we're actually in wildfire season, believe it or not. All day today, our folks were just to the east of here, I'm sorry, west of here, on a brush fire for a lot of the day, helping out our neighbors. So we never know what's going to happen throughout the course of the year. Could be a wildfire, it could be a hurricane, it could be a tornado. If you've seen recently, you know, we've gotten tornado warnings. So we have to have some funding in there that may account for the food if we're stuck here in the EOC for a period of time. Luckily, we've only been there for a couple of days, but then we sometimes notice that we need additional equipment that we didn't think of, radios, for instance. So if we have somebody on a loader, we actually, we had to give them one of the fire department's radios, and was it Oscar or Jose, I think, was on a loader. We were able to talk to him and say, hey, we now need you to go to Smith Street and Johnson Street. There's a tree, you know, down in the roadway there, and he was able to drive the loader over to that area and move it. So before that, cell phones didn't always work, but this is a little more, or a better way to establish communications amongst everybody. So we spent, I want to say it was about $30,000 on radios. Was it 30? I think about $30,000 on radios. So it's, if it doesn't get used, it doesn't get used, but at least we have the money there. And it's a small amount of money for any parameters that, something emergency management-wise, it could be an active, God forbid, assailant-type situation where we need to bring families and people there, and now we have to, we need funding for such a disastrous incident. So there's many reasons that we could use that funding.
All right. Do you have any ideas on how we can raise your admin salaries?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do you have any ideas on how we could raise your admin salaries without affecting the overall budget?
Well, this has been something that I've worked with our finance folks here the last week or two. I do believe a portion of it could be handled, a small percentage of it could be handled under this current budget, only because we were overstated a little bit with fuel because fuel prices have come down. We've used less this year. And then the, we would have to discuss, of course, ultimately, the board would have to approve this, city manager first, of course, and then you all, then the remaining, when the increases to the field come, come 10-1, that that would be accounted for for those people as well.
How high of a percentage do we need to be competitive with local entities?
I can tell you, for three of my admin personnel, we're looking 18%. You're looking at, I believe it was 10% for Fire Marshal. And although I had to put the percentage in there for myself, which created a range, I am not asking for anything for myself. I would just like my people to be taken care of. Because what happens is, if we're not competitive regionally, they are actively being sought out to go to other areas. And one thing I can tell you, if you would not recognize Groveland Fire Department from five years ago where it was to where we are today, and that has not gone unnoticed by the surrounding departments, they, we hear it all the time, wow, what is going on with you guys over there? Impressive, this, that, and the other. So I don't blame them for wanting to try to cherry pick some of our people. I'd be trying, too. I did that with Chief Theeman from the city of Dunedin, so.
Is there any reimbursement from the ISBA calls?
I'm sorry.
Do we get reimbursed from any of the ISBA calls for the surrounding area?
So years ago, there was an agreement, and Anita might be able to speak on this better, but where there was a quarterly true-up, I believe is what it was called, but right now, Councilwoman, we have a fire station on their property that has been there for five years that we don't pay rent, we don't pay anything over there. So the little bit of money that was being transferred back and forth, it didn't make good sound sense.
Sounds fair. And then, last question. What would happen if our ISO rating increased dramatically?
If it increased, like went backwards? So that affects everybody. Now, you normally don't see those effects for usually about a year or so. Then you start to see the repercussions. When it goes drastically from a, when you're a 1, 2, or a 3, or a 4, and then suddenly you go to a 10, then you normally see those effects happen pretty quickly because you're considered not having a fire department at all, almost when you're, almost unprotected when you're at a 10. This did happen to our neighbors next door here about two and a half years ago, and all the homeowners who had mortgages are required to have homeowner's insurance. They were all calling us, asking us for letters, excuse me, to provide to their insurance companies that we were their fire department and we would be coming there, and we just simply couldn't do that. Yes, we would be coming if there was a fire, but we were not their primary fire department. We were not the ones responsible for fire protection. We would be...
There they go.
I feel like they're doing that on purpose because they're going by there, right? So we would not be their primary fire department going there. We would be going there under mutual aid or automatic aid.
And that's it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
On one of the charts, it talked about the autism. Can you tell me how and where the fire department engages with the autism, either activities or through education? How do we engage with autism?
Great question, Councilwoman. Thank you for actually asking that. We actually partner, and I'm sorry, I don't know the name of the organization, but I sit on the board of the neighborhood center with Trish Cry, and we have them actually bring kids from one end of the spectrum to the other. And we have our firefighters, we just did this last year, and we're due to have this happen again, where they actually bring these kids to actually interact. We not only get training from the family members, believe it or not, the best training you're going to get is from the parents of these kids and not somebody sitting in an office somewhere telling you how these kids should respond. But they actually bring their children to us so we can interact with them to see how they may be acting differently when asked certain questions and so on and so forth. So it's a great question. This is something that we do annually, and again, we're due to do this again here soon. We just, I think we actually have some video and pictures, Chief, of this, when they were here with us? I can provide some of that information from you, when this occurred, but wonderful training. We got kudos from all the men and women in the field, thoroughly enjoyed it because it really gives you a different perspective. There's nobody in the same place on the spectrum as everybody else. It's so vastly different, and when you see, you know, a child on this end of the spectrum and one on this end, and how vastly different, and how you have to approach your interaction with them so differently is vitally important. And we involve the PD in this as well, so they do some of the training with us also.
Thank you. The last question is a trivia question, just because I'm nosy. How many fire hydrants do we have in the city?
I don't know exactly off the top of my head. I think there's about 600 fire hydrants, and I believe we have approximately a little under 100 private fire hydrants, which by the way, for ISO, they do not distinguish the difference between, and I'll explain what those are, Councilwoman, a private fire hydrant and a city fire hydrant. They want to know the data for all the fire hydrants. A private fire hydrant would be all the fire hydrants that are on the property of Kroger, on the property of Amazon, on the property of Publix, on the property of any commercial business that is required by the Fire Marshal to have a hydrant for us to use. These have to be flushed, maintained, and they also have to be flow-tested somewhat frequently. So, and Fire Marshal Frank tells them that this has to be done. So we gather all that information as well. Matter of fact, we just recently finished all the private fire hydrants. Some do have a private company do it, and they do provide that data to us. Moving forward, that's going to be something Fire Marshal Patterson insists that they get somebody to do them, because it's not always easy for us, and we pay to have the company go out and do all the other fire hydrants, at least the water company does. So private fire hydrants should be maintained by the private company that owns them, and they need to provide that data to us.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just a few questions, and we didn't get a chance to talk before, so you're going to have to hold me by the hand here.
Yes, sir.
But this is more comparison data so that I can understand where we are. You're talking about a lot of other places, but before I get on that, is our construction codes up to date? Do we have enough fire hydrants? Do we have enough internal fire hoses, you know, that I see in Orlando on walls and stuff for higher, for five-story buildings, or up on the roofs where there's, where there's air conditioners catching on fire?
So, the, depending on the type of structure, depending on the type of occupancy dictates what is required from the fire department to put in there. We can't necessarily force people to go above and beyond, we can recommend or suggest. One building did put a staircase in the back of the building, they were not required to. There was a little bit of an argument due to the size of the build, not argument, but a little bit of massaging, we had to work together to put that there. But each building and the size of the building, any occupancy type dictates what is required. For instance, an occupancy where people are might need fire-rated walls. Well, if you now built that as a Dollar General, and now you wanna turn it into a nightclub or something, it may cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars to now upgrade with sprinkler systems, put fire-rated walls in there and everything. So, people, you know, a lot of times, we tell people, contact us before you sign a lease on the dotted line, because a lot of people sign on dotted line, they go, oh my gosh, I have to put a hundred thousand dollars' worth of, come talk to us first, let's help you, let's help guide you along the way. Maybe that's not the right building for you, maybe it's the one over here, that stuff's already in, but we'll certainly help. We do it all the time, we help guide people to the right destination.
And are those standards minimum standards, or, I mean, can a city go beyond that, or on its code, or?
Sure, we could change ordinances, and we can make people go above and beyond. For instance, Fire Marshal Patterson was telling me today, where he used to work down south, they required people to sprinkler all commercial structures, no matter how small. Well, you're talking adding serious costs to your business community if you start requiring this, but these are decisions that you all have to make if, you know, we want to go there. And I think in some instances, I believe that in my lifetime, probably not in the too far future, I think residential homes are gonna require sprinkler systems. So, I think we're heading in that direction.
Wow. I'm gonna probably need to read some things off, and you get back to me, because we're, I'm sorry that we're running out of time here. In the presentation, you said that we had issues with the G2 stations alert, significant issues, and getting communication, we have a centralized communication system, right? Tell me what that means real quick.
The old system, the BRYX system that was established in the fire station, the company could never get that up and running to work with the county's dispatch. We've got away from that, we're going to, as well as the county and everybody else in the county, to the Phoenix G2 system, that's the system we're going to.
So, do we have communication now, effective?
We do, yes. No, we do communicate, they have their radios on them all the time, and that radio tone's off, but, and they're required to keep that radio on.
Chief, explain what the station...
I'm sorry?
Explain what the call was.
Oh, I'm sorry, so, when the tones go off, especially when you're sleeping, and this is a little, I'll try to be as brief as possible, we've noticed over the years what kills firefighters, one of them is cardiac disease. Your heart rate going from forty-six while you're sleeping to two-hundred-and-forty-six when you, call goes off for, you know, a house full of people that's on fire. So, what, this alerts does is actually a soft-tone alert that starts low and gradually comes up, there's soft lighting, I know that sounds all crazy or whatever, but there is science behind all of this. It doesn't delay the response time down or anything of the sort. So, the system we had previously, this BRYX system, and by the way, while this is going off, they're telling you the address information, it's also populating out on your computer in the truck as well, so when you get out there, and especially if the fire in a commercial building, you're able to go tink, 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 you're actually able to pull up the floor plan and the pre-plan of that building in our fire truck as well, another requirement of ISO, but, so, yes, the alerting system is huge, and for it to work right, the system we were using, you'd be halfway to the call before the system would actually go off.
Okay, and I'm just gonna give you these rapid fire, okay? We have fifteen firefighters, I might have heard that right, and so many, twelve, and so many administration. Can you just ballpark me later on, is that ratio, that percentage, the same as comparative fire stations? The dispatches were three thousand seven hundred and ninety-four this year, I'd like to understand what that is compared to last year, I mean, is it going up, or is it holding steady?
Call load from previous year, too?
Right, right. How many times have other cities responded to us? I know that we go out, but I'd just like to see if that's kind of reciprocal there. And then, lastly, on the ISO rating, if there's some quantitative dollar amount that we can put on if you go down a point or up a point, that we can tie in to all this discussion?
That's unfortunate, because it's so dependent on your particular building and your house and everything, and depending on the criteria you as an individual, as a homeowner, set, we've tried getting this information, it's not as easy as you, they're not gonna tell you that it'll go up or down one, or two, or five percent. This is information that is, and I apologize to say it that way, but it's unobtainable information.
But is there somebody else that had that happen that we can look at, where it went down, and, I mean, maybe we don't get it from them, but maybe...
How about we see, Mayor, I'll do my best to come up with whatever I can find you, even if it's...
Or just tell me where to look, and I'll look for it.
Sure.
Okay, with that, I have no other questions, staff, questions? No?
Mayor, if I could, real quick, just to give you comparative, Claremont Fire Department, one more fire station, two and a half times the people. Almost eighty people, one more fire station, we have thirty-three people.
That's the kind of stuff I wanna see, okay? All right, with that said, we'll go ahead and close the workshop, and we'll start the meeting, council meeting, in five minutes. Okay, good evening, everybody, the date is April, what's today's date? April seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the time is seven-ten. I hereby call to order the meeting of the City Council of Groveland, Florida. Will the Vice Mayor please lead us in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And remain standing, please, for invocation provided tonight by Gordon Brown, Central Florida Free Thought Community.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Keough, council members and staff, thank you for this moment of participation in your meeting. We begin with gratitude and reflection. We live in a free society where myriad voices and beliefs are respected and even celebrated, and as constituents, we share the responsibility, along with you, to preserve and nurture our diverse communities. We ask that every stakeholder is given a voice in shaping our community, and that the voiceless will be remembered in our discussions. We are hopeful that the deliberations you engage in now and in the future include a few guiding principles, decisions made with evidence and veracity, acceptance of those who grow up, live, and love differently, abiding regard for the diversity and dignity of those who are served, and keeping to the principles of logic, compassion, and justice. And finally, I leave you with inspiration from Theodore Roosevelt. Here is your country. Cherish these natural wonders, cherish the natural resources, cherish the history and romance as a sacred heritage for your children and your children's children. Do not let selfish men or greedy interests skin your country of its beauty, its riches, or its romance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Keith Keough?
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines?
Here.
Councilmember Amy Jo Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Judith Fike?
Yeah.
Councilmember Mike Radzick, excused absence. City manager Mike Heim.
Here.
City attorney Anita Jurosi-Carver?
Here.
Sergeant-at-Arms Chief Sean Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am.
City clerk Virginia Wright here.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Just before we get started, I'd like to just take a minute to apologize to everybody that was here at the last city council meeting, when we got kind of off track on our rules of order, and just remind everybody in the back of the room, there are speaker forms that you fill out and say that you wanna speak on a certain subject, and those will be handed in to our clerk. This is very important, so that we can circle back to you if we don't have the answers tonight to your questions, or if we need to further clarify issues. On that form, we've changed it a little bit, there is a, there is, we learned up in Tallahassee, there's a couple boxes that say wave in support or wave in opposition. That's for people that want to announce their support or opposition without getting up and speaking. Your name will be called, you'll stand and raise your hand, that yes, you're waving in support, it'll be read in support or in opposition, and that'll be documented and put into the record. So, please, make sure that we get those forms filled out, because we will require them when it's time to go into discussion. With that said, guest speakers' presentations and proclamations, we have the recognition of student Gray Orr.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Ms. Ashley Wright is here, and she identified this young student as somebody who should be recognized by the mayor and council for his exceptional scholastic efforts. As I understand it, he's a homeschooler who was recently accepted to a rather prestigious institution he can tell us about, and I know for the last couple of years, he's worked on, you can tell by his T-shirt, the Local Robotics Club, who we'll hear from next.
Thank you. You wanna say a few words?
Um, this is one of those things that, like, I knew I was gonna be here, like, days in advance, then kind of showing up here, is that moment of like, wow, this is actually happening. So, first, I would like to say a thank you to the rest of my robotics team for the past five years that they have given me, and the lessons that they've taught me, and like, kind of the experience that they've given me, you know, both in STEM and in all other aspects of my life, that they've kind of pushed me, and they've kind of, I don't wanna say forced, because that's a really bad word, but they've really helped me grow and helped me become the person that I really am right now. And I would like to say a thank you to my dad and other members of my family who are here today. Because after, I was probably six years old when I decided that mechanical engineering was what I wanted to go into, and they were kind of the people who really pushed me to, beyond just deciding that, like, this is what I wanted to do, to push me, need to be truly exceptional, and pushed me to be exactly the person that they knew I wanted to be.
Well, thank you so much, and congratulations, and if you can stand right there, Mr. Orr, for a second, could I have the team come up with you, and could I get an update for the record on your success, recent success in the competition, please?
First, I wanna thank the council and the city of Groveland for all of the support you've been giving us as a team for almost six years now. We started in 2019 with the guidance of the city of Groveland, and so, every bit that we've, every bit of success that we've had, we have to give a huge thanks to the city for the support we've received. This year, we participated, three weeks ago, in the Orlando Regional that took place at the University of Central Florida's basketball arena, the Edition Finance Arena. There were fifty-two teams there, we placed thirty-seventh out of those fifty-two teams. We had a very competitive season this year, had a few setbacks, a few challenges, but this, I'm very proud of the fact that these students were in a never-give-up frame of mind during the entire competition. We would fall backwards, and they would rebuild, come back stronger, and that is how we ended up finishing where we did, which was an improvement of fifteen places over last season when we competed there.
Well, very nice. Let's take a, do you mind if we come out and take a picture with all of... Let's take a, do you mind if we come out and take a picture with all of you, the council?
Sure.
Why don't we come right up here?
Okay, on the count of three, everyone. One, two, and three.
Thank you. Thanks for representing us so well. Appreciate you all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Orr, congratulations. Congratulations.
Gray, congra-
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Orr, while we're, while we're finishing our congratulations, could you step to the mic and just let everybody know what school you're, you're going to, you've been accepted at, too?
As of August 20th, I will be a part of the Massachusetts Institute of Technology Class of 2029.
Don't, don't forget about Groveland when you get up there. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a proclamation, the November 4th, 2025 City of Groveland municipal election. Jenny, would you please read that into the record?
Yes. Proclamation Municipal Election. By the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Groveland, Florida, Keith Keough, I do hereby proclaim the municipal election of the City of Groveland, Florida to be held Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, for the purpose of electing two regular members of the city council to fill a two-year term beginning November 17th, 2025. If more than two candidates qualify for a district seat, then there shall be a primary election held August 19th, 2025. I do specify that the vacant offices of District 2 and District 4 of the city council shall appear on the ballot as District 2 and District 4. Qualifying begins noon Monday, June 9th, 2025, and ends at noon Friday, June 13th, 2025. In order to qualify, persons must be a registered voter, meet the city's resident residency requirement of two years prior to the first day of qualifying period, and reside in the applicable district within the city. If a potential candidate wishes to have the city's election qualifying fee of 1% of the annual salary waived due to undue burden, he or she must present to the city clerk a petition signed by 10% or more of the total registered voters of the city for the immediately preceding general election no later than before noon, May 12th, 2025. The petition signature forms required and regulations are available on the city's website at www.groveland-fl.gov and at the City of Groveland City Hall located at 156 South Lake Avenue, Groveland, Florida, 34736. All parties that are interested in qualifying for this election may do so by contacting the city clerk's office at 352-730-9285, or 352-232-9057, or via email at virginia.wright@groveland-fl.gov to schedule an appointment. The appointment shall be held at City Hall 156 South Lake Avenue, Groveland, Florida, 34736, and application to qualify may be obtained on the city's website at www.groveland-fl.gov or by contacting the city clerk. All voting precincts will be open for this election. Witness my hand and seal of the City of Groveland, Florida, this 7th day of April, 2025. Signed, Keith Keough, Mayor attested by Virginia Wright, City Clerk.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Next, we'll go on, moving on to the consent agenda. Does anybody on the, on the council wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, any member of the public want to remove anything from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, Jenny, will you go, please go ahead and read the consent agenda into the record?
Yes. Consideration of Approval March 17th, 2025, City Council Workshop Minutes. March 17th, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes. Resolution 2025-12, Approving the Creation and Appointment of a Municipal Canvassing Board to Serve for the November 4th, 2025 City of Groveland Municipal Election. Recommendation of Approval, Rupaner Rezoning, RZ-PZ202564. Resolution 2025-15, Consideration and Appointment of Candidates to Serve on the Public Lands and Trails Citizen Acquisition Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you, Vice Mayor. So moved. Second, Ms. Fike, will go around and take the roll. Jenny?
Vice Mayor Gaines, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye. Okay, moving on to old business, the agenda item one, summer camp programming options. Before we get started, Jenny, will you please read the email from Councilman Radzick into the record?
Yes. Email, March, excuse me, April 7th, 2025, from Councilmember Radzick. If we cannot do it with our existing staff without further extending them, then we should do it with EYP.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a presentation? I see, go ahead, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is under old business, because at a previous council meeting, mayor and council had some discussion, asked for some clarification and some more information in regard to procedures and policies. Those are included in your packet. The RAC had previously recommended EYP to provide the youth programs for the summer. Council was presented with three options, one in-house, and while we could do it in-house, we recognized the limitations of our abilities to have extended hours, full days, and every day of the week. The YMCA also provided a proposal, and EYP provided a proposal. Staff supports the recommendation for the RAC because of EYP's ability to provide programming every day, extended care, as well as incorporation of academics.
Thank you so much for that. Do I have a motion to accept, and then we'll get into discussion? A motion to accept the staff recommendation?
A motion to accept the RAC recommendation.
I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second. We'll open it for discussion. Was there, I saw one of our directors in the back. Do you want to say anything?
I can, Mike Walker, Parks Community Services Director. I can say as much as you'd like me to, or as less, you do have representatives from the YMCA. Ms. Jessica Bauer-Collin is here. She's the executive director for YMCA of Central Florida for programming, and you have representatives here from EYP.
Okay.
So you can hear from them, or I can...
Let's go through, if you can just stand there, let's go through discussion from the panel, and if we need to pull them up, absolutely, we can, we can do that. So with that said, the motion maker, Amy Jo, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
I don't. The questions were answered for me at the last.
Okay. Ms. Fike?
Yeah, I have a few comments. So two weeks ago, we had a lot of discussion, but we had just come back from Tallahassee, and Jim O'Neill stood up and talked about, if not the youth of Groveland, then who? I may be paraphrasing what he said, but he reminded us many times that our future leaders are in school now, talking about funding and things, and kind of had a very impassioned speech about that. Then I listened to the heartfelt comments from the summer campers and their families who are part of the EYP summer camp program. I listened to Dr. Tony McCoy and his love of Groveland, and his love of his Groveland-born and rooted son, TJ. The passion of every individual who stood up to speak was palpable, and we had quite a panel of, as I call them, campers, their parents, that got up to talk about what they had received by going to EYP. We questioned the classroom teaching as part of the EYP program, so reading, math, and so on. The program is just not camp, but a bridge of learning through the summer to the start of school again. I've often trained, I used to do Train the Trainers, and we know that repetition is the key to remembrance. Say that three times, you'll never forget that statement. I've trained on that so many times that the continued repetition of the classwork with these students will keep those campers fresh and ready to hit the ground running when fall classes start again. So we need to put our money where our leaders are. We need to put our money here in Groveland, and I think we need to put our money with EYP. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
First of all, I want to say to TJ that... That all the questions and that we, we had, I had, other people had, that you maintained your professionalism. And as an etiquette consultant, I found that to be very, very pleasing. You didn't waver, questions were asked, but you maintained your professionalism. So I want you to know that I really appreciate that. Okay? No matter how many questions I ask, it ain't personal, it's just business. So I want to make a statement as to whoever is awarded this contract for the summer camp, I am going to ask that the registration fee does not go above $45. And that's my recommendation for it.
That would be an addendum to the current motion, and we would have to have a second on that, and then bring it back, right? And then vote on that, and then go back to the original motion. So we have a motion on the floor to hold the fee at $45 per person, and, and the rest being made up by the city, or, I mean, what's the...
May I give my rationale for it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed when it comes to math, but as I did the math with the YMCA, and as well as with EYP, I get it. I fully understand that the city is only going to contribute $15,000. I get that. But when I look at the variance of the money per student, up to 60, up to 70, up to 71, it goes of, EYP low is 8,400 for the, up to 60. The YMCA is 15,000. The EYP is $9,800 more for 70 students and up, $27,300, while the YMCA is 17,500. So that's like 9,800. And last but not least, the YMCA is 20,000 over 71 students, 71 and above, and the EYP is 19,000. I would imagine, I think that these figures are overhead, and if I'm not right about that, I wish someone would tell me that I am not correct about that. But no matter who gets this contract, no matter who the council votes on, I am asking, especially in these hard times now, I am asking that we keep that registration level at something that all families can use, and therefore I'm asking for a $45, no higher than a $45 registration fee.
Okay, so we have the motion for $45. Do I have a second? Seeing no second, we'll go back to the original motion. The original motion, could you please read it back, Jenny, so everybody knows?
The original motion was to approve RAC's recommendation that was made by Councilmember Carroll and seconded by Councilmember Fike.
Okay, so we have any further discussion on the council? We'll open it for public comment. Any member of the public that would like to come up and address the council? Please make sure you have turned in your, your card over here. Jenny, do we have comment? No comment, okay. Hearing no comment, we'll move on to a vote. Will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Fike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
No. And can I explain why?
Sure.
Okay. Because I could not, well, we could not come to an agreement with the registration fee. TJ, this is nothing personal, but that is the reason that I am going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Keough?
Aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda will be agenda item two, consideration of approval of resolution 2025-15, an agreement between the City of Groveland and Libby's Legacy Breast Cancer Foundation, Waterwell Farms, relating to the Leslie B. Roberts Community Garden.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item is a resolution, as it states, to allow Waterwell Farms to provide for a community garden next to the existing aquaponics facility. This will provide an opportunity to grow root vegetables and other things that aren't supported in the aquaponics. It has long been contemplated and is considered a pertinent use, but we wanted to solidify it through a lease agreement. Ms. Robin Maynard Harris is here to give a very brief presentation and explain the project to you.
Hi there. Robin Maynard Harris with Libby's Legacy and Waterwell Farms, doing business at Festival Park. I was asked to do a quick, on the annual report, makes sense, so I'm going to go through what we've done so far with the aquaponics farm, and then lead in a little bit here to the community garden. So I am technologically challenged, I will do my best, and I will, it's mainly pictures, but I will, I will talk through a bit of that. So we took over the aquaponics state, already not working, maybe this? There we go. So who we are, what we've achieved, our investments, and this is all going to be sent to you, I'm not going to read from this, but talks about who we are as Libby's Legacy. As you all know, my mom was from here in Lakeland, shared time, my mom Libby, and my grandfather Les Roberts. How it started, not great. When we took over the aquaponics farm, things were a bit of a mess. There was a lot of disarray and rotten food and some clogged systems, and so we needed the community support, and we sure got it. So Greg Faulkner, Dan Corsi, Robin Hoover, so many people came and helped us clean it up, and that was a real testament to, to the city members that we have, what we've achieved. So kind of a year in photos, we've given a lot away, a whole lot, and we're proud of it, and, and we're proud that Groveland was innovative enough to put an aquaponics farm for sustainability and to be able to feed the residents. So here's some of our photos, these are some of our volunteers, these are some of our people who came and bought produce. Part of our, the little fishies that are big now was harvesting fish earlier today, so those little guys right there you see in the photo are now ready. Our Farm-to-Table Dinner was amazing. Our Farm-to-Table Dinner was amazing. At the time, chef, not Mayor Keough, and chef Askali's Vinnie were our chefs, and it was incredible. And all the food that you see there was from the farm or from local farms within five miles. The variety, this is all about the variety, and we were able to grow to market. So we've got tomatoes, eggplant, cucumbers, microgreens, we even grew strawberries. So we're really trying everything there. We were at many, many farmers' markets, including the community market here, Trilogy's Market, the Harvest Market, Fresh Roots out on 27, and more. So we really participated in a lot of local farmers' markets with our produce and to be able to provide for Groveland residents. These are some of our produce clients, as you see, recognize a lot of faces there, these are people that you see in the city, and we're lucky to have them. We need more, obviously, but matter of fact, I see two of them right there, one of them back there, yeah. So these guys are great. The folks there, Denise and Josh, they come every week and get vegetables. The numbers, basically 2,716 pounds, the majority of that, over 87%, 2,142 pounds donated. 423 bunches of different herbs, 41 varieties of vegetables. You can't read this, it's the number stuff that most people don't care about, so when you guys get that in your box, you'll see there. But infrastructure and labor were our big cost, obviously, seeds, supplies, but add to better breakdown, and again, I don't think it's for the full public consumption for interest, so I'll move through that, I'm a numbers person too. But essentially, we spent $73,000, we brought in $51,000, obviously that doesn't add up. But in the first year of any business, right, even if you're a nonprofit, you expect to be in the red. So what we want to do is just garner some more support, and a lot of that was through grants. We got grants, seed funding, and Libby's Legacy's match, and then of course, our produce clients. Kids, our youth tours and our youth education was amazing. And you see the kids here, and these are the ones I had permission to put up, right? There's a lot more kids than this. And it was great. I mean, they got to learn how to seed, they got to feed the fish, they got to learn how, you see Jesse there in the middle, learning stem and the chemistry and how ammonia turns to nitrite and nitrate. And that's just, it's really cool for these kids to learn that so young. We've got our local to global tours, we had the Claremont Garden Center, we had Clemson University students, we had students come from Hong Kong, Kroger came to tour, and many more. We gave over 34 tours last year, and I think that's a testament as well to the interest around us and what Groveland's doing. What do I have here? Donations, so a lot of donations. So that's Love Groveland there in the top. We go out every Sunday into our community and we give away produce. It's my favorite, it's my church, honestly. It is what I do that, it's just so fulfilling, I wish you could all go to see your investment because it's really amazing. And then we've got the Boy Scouts we donated to, we've got the car line, Groveland Elementary's doing a fresh market day now, once a month, and we're giving that food away in the car line to those that need it. And that's an incredible, another testament to just our community. Neighborhood Center, South Lake, we participate in Arbor Day. I'm not reading all of that, you can read it later. And then we get to the community gardens. So essentially, this is why we're here, and I just wanted to give you a brief view of your investment in Waterwell Farms and the aquaponics, and this is kind of an addition to that, right? So we don't grow root vegetables in the aquaponics farm, because why? We're growing in water, so, right, there's no, so where are the carrots, the radish? We want to be able to continue to grow all that, but we also want to bring people together. I will read a little bit here in a second, just briefly, and then I will wrap it up. So our pink ribbon gardens, if you'll see this ribbon here, yes, it's important to me to feed all and cancer prevention, but the Pink Ribbon Garden project is huge, and I've wanted to have one in Groveland for a really long time. So if you look here, I co-founded this project with Grammy Award-winning rock star and breast cancer survivor Melissa Etheridge. I am diligently trying to get her here in October, work on that, but she's opened a lot of our gardens. Oops, what did I do? Make it, can you fix that? Thank you. I'm just going to touch this from now on. But anyway, we started this project together in 2017, this'll be our seventh, and then the one out at Waterwell Farms Retreat Space will be the eighth, and then that's it. I'm not doing more, I want to stay here in Groveland with them, I don't, we've got some in New York and across the country, but, and you see some of them there. It's a 17 by 30-foot box where survivors are growing their own fresh produce for themselves and then sisters in current treatment. This is the part I will read, but I'll, I want you to see that as well. So, "Community gardens are vital for fostering a sense of belonging and connection within neighborhoods. They create space where people from different backgrounds can come together and share the process of growing food. This shared experience builds relationships and strengthens social ties, helping to create more resilient and cohesive communities." I know you guys know this because it's in the strategic plan, and we'll talk about that too. "So, working alongside together, we can cultivate friendships, engaging meaningful conversations, and feel a sense of ownership over our environment, which can improve overall community well-being, which is why we're all here. Beyond social benefits, community gardens also contribute environmental sustainability." You guys know, and a lot of people may not know this, with our closed-loop system in the aquaponics, it's used 1,000 gallons in four years. I've only had it the last year, but that's, and that's evaporation. So this is, it's self-sustaining, it's sustaining environmentally. "Provides an opportunity for individuals to grow their own food, reducing the need for long-distance food transportation and minimizing the carbon footprint associated with industrial agriculture. The practice of growing food locally encourages a deeper understanding of where our food comes from and the environmental impact of food production. In addition, community gardens can enhance biodiversity by providing habitats for pollinators and other beneficial organisms, fostering a healthier local ecosystem. On a more practical level, community gardens can address food insecurity by providing fresh, healthy produce to individuals and families who may not have access to it otherwise. In urban areas, which we're not, that's a whole nother conversation, especially where access to food can be limited, these gardens offer a reliable source of nutrition and promote healthier eating habits. Moreover, they can be a valuable educational tool, teaching people of all ages about sustainable gardening practices, nutrition, and the importance of supporting local food systems. In conclusion, community gardens serve as multifaceted resources that not only promote environmental sustainability and food security, but also cultivate social connections and community pride, whether through the joy of sharing harvests, the opportunity to educate, or the simple act of growing food together. They are an essential part of a city's wellness." Our pledges for 2025 include $15,000 from the Livwell Foundation, the land from the city if you approve. We've got commitments from NTR Excavating, a local brother-sister team, to do the grading. We've got Jim Huntley Landscape, Ace Hardware, community members and volunteers. We're going to need more. So does it say, is this a budget, is this going to affect the budget? Well, we said no, because we're going to do, we're going to make it happen. This community, I believe, is going to make this happen. But we do want you to think about it and consider the future. So maybe Phase 1, we can do this, but then we need a shade area and a compost area and a place maybe where we can have more Farm-to-Table. So I do want this to stay on your radar, but I want to earn it. So maybe it's in the form of a grant. Maybe you have a grant out there, and that's how we do in the city of Orlando, we helped create the largest community garden there. So let us earn it, vet us, let's see how we do, and then come back and see if you want to contribute in the budget. Our community partners for last year, I really want to thank, Livwell Foundation, the city of Groveland, all wired up, they're not here anymore, but they were very helpful when wires were cut and we needed things back together to get some things happening, and those kids made it happen. And Gray, this kid is a genius, I'm glad he's going to MIT. Sprinkler Repair Company, Aaron and Gregory came out, every time there was, especially in the beginning, there was a leak, when there was something, they dropped everything to come. The reason you see Jim Huntley Landscape that's going to help us with his labor is that Sprinkler Repair Company is really busy, and I think that's a really cool thing. I think good gets good, I think they'd do it if they could, and they did it this last year, but let's, you know, spread the wealth, and I love that, that more community members are willing to step up. Last year, community volunteers, we had Robin Hoover, Ms. Deborah, Dan Corsi, Aaron and Greg Faulkner, James Nixon, who was 15 when he started with us there, Jesse and Justice Dees, Randy Nixon, Ellison Hoover, Vivian Hoover, Chef Keith Keough, and Chef Vinnie for our Farm-to-Table was incredible. Eliana, Kaylee Perez, Kiana Jones, Jamie Lowe, Banks Helfrich, Nick and Robin DeWitt, Aiden, Toby Hosterman, Madeline Hosterman, that's father and daughter that would come out and help, DJ Lowe, Jennifer Waters, and Evelyn Wilson, who wanted no recognition but washed every single dish from that Farm-to-Table Dinner on her own at her own house and delivered them back the next day. So we want to recognize that as well. I just didn't want to be remiss in thanking the people who've gotten us here. I know that you see the value because I know that it meets the aligning value of the eco-grary lifestyle that the strategic plan writes about. And what we're saying is, we're going to do it, we're not asking you for funding, we're going to figure it out. We're asking you to support it, we're asking, I'd love to name it the Leslie B. Roberts Community Garden because my grandfather bought here in 1949. He grew citrus here, he taught me how to grow food, how to fish, and having his name on that is really valuable to me. And that's why we're willing to just reach out to businesses, maybe you can help there, maybe some of the people that you, Woodard and Curran, some of the people you have contracts with, maybe even Waste Manager, I don't know, but you reach out and say, hey, if you guys want to contribute this year, how about our local charity? And let's get the whole community involved in this and have another Farm-to-Table out there with food that our community members have grown as well. I'm here if you have questions.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to accept Resolution 2025-15?
I'll make that motion. I'd also like to add to the motion, if I might, that we do call it the Leslie B. Roberts in honor of our grandfather. Can we do that on that motion? Done, throw that in there.
Okay, so then we have a second?
A second.
We have a second discussion. Judy?
Well, I, you know, the chef in me and the old farmer in me says, I think this is something that the community can wrap their arms around and dive into. I do buy through our local CSA, and I do get tons of produce from Robin's Waterwell Farms, which I love. And I just, this is near and dear to my heart. I don't think there's a woman sitting here, or even you gentlemen, that have not been touched in some way, significant, maybe insignificant, with someone who has suffered with breast cancer. And I got to tell you, what a better way to remember these people and celebrate them in any way, shape, or form, both with Libby's Legacy and this Leslie B. Roberts Community Farm. Nothing would make me happier, so I'm glad that it was put on the agenda tonight so we could talk about it.
Thank you. Amy Chell?
Robin, if you'll come back up here for a minute and humor me, I got a couple of questions for you. Come on up. Can you explain how a community garden works?
Yes.
Briefly.
Sure. Briefly, the community's going to build some beds, we're going to get it tilled, we're going to, we're going to have it there, and then we're going to make available to the community probably at least 12 4x10 beds that they'll lease for the year. And that lease is really just to show their investment that they're there, like skin in the game, it's like $30 a year, we're not talking about a lot. And that's just for things that we do, like community workdays and tools that we'll need around there, it all goes back into the community garden. And essentially, they're responsible for bringing in their own soil, although I really believe that Reliable People is going to donate, I'm working on that too, so they don't have to in the first year, but as people come and that soil goes down, the new person will come in with their $30, and they'll have access, there'll be a gate, and they'll have access and be able to come in and bring their kids and grow their own food, in a nutshell.
And then, so you have the other community gardens, have those received positive feedback? Have they been like successful in the communities that they're in?
Great question. Like I said, I was a founding member of the very first, the largest community garden in the city of Orlando. We have 57 beds there plus a pink ribbon garden, and we've been around for eight years. We opened that garden on May 17, 2017, built it on April 30, 2017, and it's still growing strong, it's full, we end up with waitlist, and so we have bylaws, and I'm going to, I plan to bring those, I plan to have a board, small, three to five, just people that care, to make sure, silly things, like you're not growing watermelon and it's going in three beds beside you, or you didn't put rosemary in and now we have rosemary for three years. If anybody grows rosemary, you know what I mean. So, and then we have an herb garden that's separate and things like that, just simple, it sounds city, right, a community garden bylaws, but we'll do things like that and we'll make sure that it's run smoothly. We've always done that, we'll continue to do that, and you can rest assured that anything that's got my mom and my granddaddy's name on it will be run just fine.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
This is not particularly about this community garden, but I want to thank Robin for so graciously going to Michael's Foundation, which he was a veteran and he committed suicide. And his family started a foundation. Now, the director of Michael's Foundation wants to start a community garden in Claremont. And Robin so graciously went out there to talk to them because they want to do a veterans' community garden, and I just wanted to thank you for sharing with them. Thank you.
Okay, the chair just says, thank you for all you do. People don't understand all the stuff that goes on in the background around this community, and I appreciate your hard work on behalf of Groveland. With that said, we have no further discussion here, any discussion from the public?
Matthew Baumann.
Matthew Baumann, 1122 Imperial Eagle Street, Groveland, Florida. First, I think it's a great project, I look forward to seeing it, I really think the aquaponics is awesome. I wasn't able to get a lot of information in the brief time I found out about this, so it's mostly just a comment in that I wasn't sure they're going to be using raised beds or if they're planning to use the soil on site. My only comment is, years ago, a lot, large part of that property used to be an old mobile home park that was rather dilapidated and not well taken care of, which I think is why the city eventually purchased that property to get rid of the mobile homes. And so my concern would just be if they're planning to use this soil there to maybe have it evaluated for possible contaminations. Just prudence, that's all.
Good input.
Yeah, thank you.
Good history.
I would like to see it go in, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, that closes the discussion. I'll call, Jenny, will you take the vote?
Fike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye. Congratulations. Nicely done. And beautiful pictures, by the way, those are very nice pictures that should be seen in a lot of different places, very nicely done. Next is, we have a presentation from Doug Favre, who has asked for some time on the agenda. Can I have Mr. Favre and Mr. TJ Fish come forward and make your presentation on State Road 19 and 27?
I'll jump in first. First of all, I got to go tour, a fresh tour of the aquaponics the other day, getting ready for the groundbreaking. My goodness, we finally found the right partner, so kudos to everybody. All right, with that, I want to open up TJ Fish, Director of Transportation and Public Works.
Douglas Favor, 432 Long and Winding Road, Groveland. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, City Attorney, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I brought this issue up. My wife and I have lived here in Groveland for 11 years, and we live in Long and, or Blue Spring Reserve, which is just one mile north of the intersection of US 27 and 19. We love the area so much, our daughter decided to buy in Trinity Lakes, which is one of the communities I helped to approve when I was on the Planning and Zoning Board for three years. So we travel consistently through 19 going south and north. Also, we've owned our own business for 19 years, so we're always accessing that area. And my concern is that both the north and south interchanges of 27 and 19, there's yield signs there, but nobody's yielding. It's like you have to stop on 19 because there's no, and TJ, you and I had this conversation a long time ago, that this interchange was designed over 50 years ago, it wasn't designed for the amount of traffic, so there's no acceleration lane for you to merge on to 19 from either direction. And with the Ford Commerce Center, as big as it is and as many 18-wheelers, and with Trinity Lakes, Cherry Lake Tree Farm, all the growth, the infrastructure's not there. It's a 55 mile an hour zone. We drive down 19, my wife almost got into an accident going down to Trinity Lakes because the people coming off of 27 to go south on 19, they didn't stop. They have to yield, but they didn't. And if you don't yield, what do you do? You either have to stop or you have to move. So my recommendation was, my idea, and thank you for allowing me this, is to put stop signs there. Because now it's not a he said, she said, he didn't yield, she didn't yield, whatever, you're breaking the law. My wife and I, having owned this business for 19 years, we drive all over central Florida, and we see these stop signs that have solar panels, and they're flashing red lights, whether they have LED lights flashing around the stop sign, some have the painted lines on the road that says stop. So if you have a stop sign there, somebody's breaking the law. So that's one issue, and another... So that's one issue, and another consideration is, just recently, last Saturday night at 11:40 PM, at the intersection of Arrow Tree and 19, there was a head-on collision where somebody that was traveling north on 19 going towards Howie veered into oncoming traffic, killed the person coming southbound. So the innocent person died, the people that veered did not, they survived, and then not even, so that was at 11:40 PM. 20 minutes later, it's midnight, it's now Sunday, at 3:15 in the morning, three more women died just by Holy Ghost in the Hills because they were going 116 miles an hour, drinking Patron Tequila, and there's videos of it, it's been splashed all over social media. So within a period of six hours, four people died on that road. And Mr. Mayor, you know, this is part of the reason why I went to Tallahassee with you. Thank you for the invitation about State Road 19. And I'm hoping, I don't know if this is the time for it or not, but I'm hoping, I would like to be, in the future, appointed to, what is it, the Lake Sumter Metropolitan Planning Organization to work with DOT in the future infrastructure projects in this area. So, did I cover everything?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate that.
And Mayor, members of the council, I want to take Mr. Favor's concerns, turn it into, well, let's take a look at what is actually happening versus what else we can do. So, I want to real quickly hit what we're doing with DOT, where we are with State Road 19, generally with everything going on, how that MPO fits in. We have a Metropolitan Planning Organization, what is that? Well, it's important, and we'll talk about that, then what next steps the council can consider. So, let me start with, his concerns are valid, I mean, from a professional standpoint, this is a functionally obsolete interchange. It was designed in the 60s, and it functions that way. So the ramps are short. When the resurfacing project was in design, the one that's been ongoing now for the last year, we asked them, please address these ramps. They didn't do what was suggested tonight, they didn't do a whole lot. We asked, you know, this merging issue is very real, and so I still consider that an issue that's hanging out there, and there's a few ways that it could be addressed. So there's an aerial, I did want to just selfishly take advantage of showing that on the north side of 27 there, right next to those wetlands, that's our Sunshine wastewater plant, like literally right next to the wetlands. So when I talk about why we can't do much with Sunshine, just wanted to use that aerial while I was up here. So, moving on, maybe, yes. So, we have a lot of traffic growth, and it's twofold. How much is local? Some, and it's not just Groveland, it's Howie in the Hills, it's Leesburg, it's all over. But the regional traffic is very real. You've got a new dynamic happening in Lake County, and it gets worse, candidly, it gets a lot worse south of US 27 because that's where the truck influence is the strongest. But even north of the Turnpike, up at Blue Spring Reserve and onto Howie in the Hills and beyond, you know, even Taveries is experiencing a level of traffic congestion that has not been experienced in the past. So this interchange, I mean, again, 27 and 19, this interchange was built in the late 60s, the Turnpike main line was being built around the same time, it's absolutely antiquated, the ramps are inadequate, and it is time to further engage DOT on countermeasures, including what Mr. Favor suggested. And sometimes IT steps in and helps me. Whoops, back up. I think I gotta go backwards, let's see if I can make that work. Maybe. Yes. All right, so staff, including me, we meet regularly with DOT, like, very, very regularly, including today. But we have monthly meetings to coordinate many, many items throughout Groveland. In fact, I generated a memo recently to Mr. Hein, and it shocked me that I literally have two pages worth of things that are pending right now with DOT. So, you know, it is a lot, and it is attributed largely to growth and regional traffic growth. So the items we talk about, definitely safety and operations, all the intersections that are pending signalization, lots of development review, including, you know, things that are happening right near this interchange, like the racetrack, the future Wawa, all those matter right now. Maintenance and resurfacing projects like State Road 19, and then, of course, short and long-range planning, which takes different forms. It may be what happens when they're designing a resurfacing project like Orange Street or State Road 19, or it may be bigger projects, like when a PDNE study is done, which we'll talk about in just a moment. So right now, we have multiple things on 19. The resurfacing project that started a year ago is finally nearing completion. The last asphalt work left is under the bridges of the Turnpike and US 27, so those are still pending, but most of the actual paving, the repaving, is complete. Three new layers, that'll last us about 15 to 20 years, and so in that time, we're hoping DOT will solve what's the future of 19. Signalization coordination, the most recent announcement was Cherry Lake Road, now officially warranted for a signal. DOT is committed, they're designing it now, it will be constructed next year. We have the pending city of Groveland, sewer forced main construction from Trinity Lakes to that Sunshine plant that is right next to the wetlands. And I say that because that's part of our capacity management program for wastewater that we're knee-deep in the middle of, and so getting that permit this coming month is very critical, and that's on the verge of happening. And then, most importantly, what we're doing with the process, with DOT, this Lake Sumter MPO, that is a two-county transportation agency, we're asking for official studies of both State Road 19 and US 27. So a PDNE, Project Development Environment Study, it's required. You don't have a project unless you have a PDNE study that takes your idea and defines it as a national project. It is really deep into environmental, especially environmental issues, but also social. When I say social, the impacts on property owners along the way, or residents, the economic impacts of, you know, what's the cost-benefit ratio of certain decisions, and they look at safety and operational. I assure you, they will look at every intersection, and they will consider, believe it or not, should it be a roundabout or should it be a traffic signal? They'll look at what's the future need? Is it four lanes? Is it six lanes? We hope it's only four. So the whole point being is that they look at many alternatives, including not doing anything at all. What if we do nothing? What's the future look like? So both 19 and 27 are both active requests of the Lake Sumter MPO for these studies. Now, of the two requests, the one that's gotten the most traction is State Road 19. These two graphics in front of you, let me explain real quick. The one on the left is the study limits for this PDNE study. It's from County Road 455 up at the Dollar General, that's actually part of the Groveland service area, it's not in Howie, it's actually part of Groveland. It's not in the city, but it's part of Groveland. And then it's all the way down to State Road 50. For context, on the right is the other analysis that we're asking DOT for, which is from I-4 in Polk County all the way back up to 27 and the Turnpike, to look at this truck movement factor that's plaguing our downtown. So that's what we put into both the MPO and DOT as a funding request to get these items studied, so we can figure out what we're doing. All right. The MPO is the regional agency responsible for transportation planning and funding. They have three major things that they have to do that's important to Groveland. Long-range transportation plan, is 19 in there as a cost feasible project? Yes. Is it in the five-year transportation improvement program, which is committed funding? No. Is it on the list of priority projects for funding? Yes. It's number 17 on the top 20. Mayor Keough is on the MPO governing board of elected officials. There are also two committees that are advisory technical, which is staff, and community advisory committee, which is made up of residents, citizens. And basically, that list of priority projects by law is what DOT uses to make funding decisions. Again, it's number 17, and it has been a huge push, thanks to all of you, everybody in this room that's contributed comments to DOT, took the drive to Tallahassee. We have gotten some momentum on this issue. All right. DOT Secretary Tyler, to all of us that were in the room that day on March 12th, said, we're committed to moving forward on the study. And then my question, of course, what does that mean? Because I know how DOT works, so we'll speak to that in just a moment. So the funding commitment of a full-blown PDNE study, which is estimated to be $2 to $3 million, and why so much to do a study? First of all, the money for studies can only be spent on studies, so I hear comments that, well, why can't they spend money to do this? But there's a lot of federal and state requirements that go into these studies, including the environmental permitting. That's the driver of why it's so expensive and why does it take two years? So two years to comply with all the requirements. And here's what I heard, Mayor, is the DOT secretary's committed to starting the planning for State Road 19. That might lead to a pre-PDNE study, which at least starts the planning before you jump into that expensive environmental review. So I just want to mention that, that as we hear, as you and I both attend MPO meetings on behalf of the city, this will become more clear over the next few months. So with that said, the widening, it was not a foregone conclusion, but yes, they are gonna look at, does it need to be four-laned? And when they're looking at four-laning 19, you can't look at that without, what do we do with this interchange? And have you noticed, it's very constrained, not a whole lot to work with right there. So, next steps. Staff will continue doing what staff does, which is, for a city the size of Groveland, DOT will tell you, man, Groveland is very active in coordinating with DOT, which I'm very proud of, because it's extremely important with what I refer to as a very transportation-rich city of Groveland, with State Road 19, State Road 30, State Road 50, US 27, and Florida's Turnpike. That's a lot. All right, so the review with DOT staff, we want to talk about Mr. Favor's suggestions, which I absolutely agree with. What can we do to improve safety and operations at that interchange? We continue to use the MPO process to gain commitments for that full funding of a PDNE study, so when we see it in the MPO five-year program and the DOT five-year program, we know it's absolutely real. Finally, we need to bolster our presence at the MPO meetings. Mayor Keough is doing a great job at the governing board. I am the appropriate designee for the technical advisory committee. I've actually been participating historically for Groveland on the other committee, but I think we're at a point now that the council can consider a resolution appointing someone to the community advisory committee, could be Mr. Favor. And of course, I, instead of Mr. Maslow, he has been appointed the designee, and I'm the alternate, we're gonna switch that and make me the designee for the technical advisory committee, and that will be my new regular meeting instead of the other committee. So with all that said, the other thing the council can consider, if you think it's appropriate, is you could do your own resolution. You've already done one on your priorities to the MPO and to the county commission, and it was the study of State Road 19 top of the list. But you can also do a resolution to MPO and DOT saying, this interchange specifically is a bugaboo, it's an issue, and it can't really point to another one in Lake County quite like this one, because there aren't any left. All the other ones have been rebuilt pretty much, like the one in Mount Dora. So with all that said, I think one of the things in anticipation of that PDNE study is DOT's consultants will come in and say, now we need to rally all of your stakeholders, which is great. Why don't we go ahead and do that now and get the people that we know, like Mr. Favor, Mr. F. Trinity Lakes residents, Cherry Lake Road residents, what have you, Lake Emma Road, let's have everyone that wants to be a stakeholder, let's get you pre-identified, not a Sunshine Committee, just organizing so that here are the people that we'd like you, DOT, to engage. So with that, I'll stop. If you have any questions for Mr. Favor or for me, I'll be glad to answer. No action tonight.
Thank you very much. Questions? Amy Jo?
Sorry, TJ, just a quick question. So, I know there's no action tonight, but from hearing Mr. Favor speak and you, so the first initial swipe would be to put stop signs up that are flashing, that get people's attention, as opposed to leaving the yield signs there? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of those low-hanging fruit, operational items, where we could say, look, you all follow your own specifications, but we think it needs a full stop control instead of this yield merge thing.
So does DOT then have to take that action, or is it something that the city can do?
So the city can convey it, and we could do it at two levels. Staff could do what staff does, but if you feel like it's elevated to the elected officials' level, that's where a resolution would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
Vice Mayor? Just, I appreciate you clarifying the fact that Mr. Tyler gave us money from his contingency fund and not had a budget approved on the PDNE and the stoplight at Cherry Lake Road and 19. So, that's good. We won't be able to do a resolution tonight. I think we do a consensus to ask the city manager to bring back on the next agenda a resolution item. Can I get consensus on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, not only that, if staff could suggest, we also bring forward resolutions on the technical and the citizens' advisory committees as well.
Correct. Do we get consensus on that? Yes, 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 we have consensus. With that, thank you very much for your time and your energy on this presentation. You're well done. With that, we'll move into public comment. Jenny, do we have some people?
Yes. Banks Helfrich.
Farmer Banks Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day, you can take peanuts bought at either Ace Hardware or at Publix that are raw, in the shell, you can soak them for two days, and you can put them in the ground, and you can grow them right here in Groveland. Mayor, council, distinguished guests, welcome to April, welcome to tax month. There's probably not one person in here that wants to or loves to pay taxes. In fact, death is the only word associated with taxes more than any other word in the English language. So what exactly do we get with our taxes? Many of you, many of us out here, drove today on roads paid for by our taxes. All of us who are breathing in this room right now are breathing air, which are funded by our taxes, clean air. The water back there that is coming out of the faucet is brought to you by our taxes. Many of you in here today, Chief Ramsey, him and his staff, his detectives and his officers to serve and protect us, paid for by our taxes. Chief Carroll and his firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, to make sure that within seven minutes, we'll be at an emergency of everyone in this room, paid by our taxes. In fact, you all up here, our city manager, our council, our clerk, which does not get enough attention, I think, our, those on the dais who are elected officials, paid for by our taxes. So if you think about it, without taxes, we do not have government, this form of government. Without taxes, we do not have county government, or state government, or even federal government. When somebody says to me, freedoms are not free, I can definitely agree with them, because freedoms are not free. Our taxes pay for our liberties, our taxes pay for our freedoms. I am Farmer Banks Helfrich, may you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alan Joyce.
Hello, Alan Joyce, 17250 Heaven's View Way in Lake County, Florida. Wanted to say two things tonight. I was here about a month ago with a big group of people, and we spoke against what Palisades wants to do to our community and making this a commercial building in a residential neighborhood. There were three commissioners here that night and the city manager. The big group that came with us, everyone said they were so amazed and impressed that they felt their voice was heard. Not that they got a yes or no, but the three commissioners that were here listened very intently, and we just felt like, wow, we've been ignored, we can't do anything with this thing, they hurt us. And so I wanted to thank the commissioners that were here that night for that. And then, I went on that trip to Tallahassee. And I'm a believer in your leadership, and I'm a believer in your leadership. And that was impressive. So I've, my former life, retired fire chief, emergency manager for the city of Miami, FEMA administrator, I dealt with city, county, state, federal, Congress. FEMA administrator, I dealt with city, county, state, federal, Congress, all those different people, but I walked away from that meeting saying, wow, these people, they listen, they care, and seeing in Tallahassee and stuff, they really care for their citizens and stuff. So I want to thank you for that. You don't get enough of that. It's a lot of hard work, sacrifice, so you never hear a lot of that, but thank you for that. And I just wanted to come here and tell you that tonight, so thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
TJ McCoy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and city manager Mike Hine, I just wanted to thank you guys so much for the opportunity for EYP to do the summer camp. Something that I want to say, I'm here tonight with a heavy heart. Today, I lost a good friend of mine, teammate I played with, to suicide. And just being able to get this contract means a lot to me personally, because it really proves that I'm more than just an athlete. So I'm very thankful tonight. I'm very thankful to my parents, my mother and father, my wife, my sister that are here tonight. And what I want to do for you guys is to show that the city of Groveland is going to be the standard for summer programs in the state of Florida. We want to educate our kids, we want to empower our kids, and we really want to make sure that they get the most out of a summer and have a good time. So thank you guys tonight. Appreciate it.
Jen Eastridge.
Jen Eastridge, my address is protected. So I'm looking at an article from February 5th that says that Alpha Inspections was acquired, taken over by another company. So then you go and you pull their contract, and paragraph number 15 says, persons not a party to this agreement may not claim any benefit hereunder or as a third-party beneficiary thereto. There's also no paragraph in here for an assignment. So if Alpha Inspections was completely bought out by this third-party company, has the council looked at the contract, tried to negotiate a contract? Are we making a new contract with this new company, or? So that's one of my really big questions. The other one that I have, excuse me, is December 31st of 2025 is a big date. Inside of Mike Hine's contract that is dated, oh God, where'd it go? March 6th, I apologize. March 6th of 2023, it says, if the city and Mike Hine desire to continue his employment beyond December 31st of 2023, then the terms of the following. If is a big word, and words mean something. So I understand that his rent is supposed to be going up, and I understand there's a lot of things that are supposed to be happening, but if, maybe we should be looking at a couple of these contracts. I know that other contracts are being looked at, so I implore the council to go ahead and look at those two, too. Thank you.
There's no other public comment?
No other? Okay, well, thank you so much. If we can go on now to our reports from the council, we'll start with Amy Jo.
All right. So, let's see, I didn't write out dates, but I went to the farmer's market two Saturdays ago, and then there was also a wakeboarding show that day that I went over to. There's a collage somewhere that's going to have pictures from all these things I'm talking about, except I had a meeting with Alan Joyce this week to look at the Palisades shed and that area. I'm just going to go over that. Also, there was Founder's Day, that was a great event. That day, we also did breakfast at Oak Tree Colored Cemetery, and then I toured the aquaponics farm this week. So, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Ms. Feig?
My turn. So before I start my director's report, I do want to remind everybody again that my town hall slash huddle or huddle slash hall is April 24th. It will be at Cherry Lake Park. The food trucks will set up at 5:30. We have some good food trucks coming, and the town halls will start at 7:00. There are flyers again on the back table. Please feel free to take one with you so you have the information at hand. It will be tented, there will be chairs. I, from the, from what I'm hearing, word on the street, it should be a fairly large gathering. It may be wise to bring your own chair, but hopefully the city will have enough out there. So please, grab a flyer. So, for my director's report, so on the 18th of March, in preparation for the Florida League of Cities trip to Tallahassee for the Legislative Action Days, there was a very informative webinar that FLC put on, and I dialed into that, and I knew what we were going up to talk about, but I felt even more informed and better prepared to go up when we were starting to meet with our public officials up there. It was a busy couple of days. The mayor was up there as well, and it, you know, it was jam-packed. So you can see a group of us there in the middle when we were in, listening to House Bill, I'm going to say 493, don't hate me if I'm wrong, but you can see Mayor Murray from Claremont and Alicia Berry from Leesburg sitting there, and a lot of different people. They had a very large turnout this year. I kind of jumped ahead on that, but I'll come back to it, because I'm ahead of myself. So on March 19th, I did my pre-qual. I'm running for reelection. On the 20th of March, there was a fundraiser for Sean Parks, for Lake County Commissioner. I had a good time going to that, saw the mayor there. We had a lovely morning, having some coffee and lunch. On the 21st, there was a chamber breakfast with the South Lake Chamber. So Building Blocks Ministry, as we know right here in the blizzard of Groveland, was the main event sponsor. They discussed their ministry and the mission, as well as opportunities for folks in the community to be involved, and it really is a wonderful organization. If you're not familiar with them, by all means, reach out, give them a call, pop by, learn about what they offer to disabled residents within our community. Kathleen Dial from Lake County, she's the Lake County Executive Director of Development, provided the same day an informative presentation on Wellness Way. She's been invited and has accepted the speaker's role at the Lake League of Cities Luncheon, which will be held here in Groveland in July. It's a very good presentation. Sarah Mazin of East, probably just ruined that name, of East Ridge High School, was awarded the $1,000 Ray Goodman Scholarship. They give that scholarship monthly. This girl is a dynamo. The world better buckle up, because she's got good things ahead of her. And Pastor Nelson Bloom, a good friend to the community, introduced his Latin Festival to be held in October. Stay tuned for this exciting upcoming event. He couldn't be here tonight, but he will at some point come up in public comment and talk about it. On the 22nd, I went to the farmer's market. I love the farmer's market. If you have not been, go at least once. Trust me, there's something there. You won't walk out empty-handed. Meet your residents, put your dollars back into Groveland, and support our farmers and our crafters that are there. That same day, I hopped right over to the Wake United Expo and Competition, and this is a wakeboarding expo. Lake David gets a lot of attention. Boy, there's something going on there all the time. But there are young men and women that were competing in these wakeboard activities. I was amazed in talking with the residents there, and you can see some of them, a couple of young ladies down the bottom of my photos there, families that drove in from Georgia to participate in this. I mean, that's all, you know, that's amazing, the people that are coming to enjoy our city and drop their dollars in our city. I mean, it's got quite an attraction factor. So I, in talking, especially to these two young, this young gentleman and this young lady there, I said, yeah, how'd you get involved in this? Oh, my dad was involved, or my mom was involved, and we water-ski together and we wakeboard together. So, you know, it kind of starts at home and builds from there, but it was a great, beautiful day in the sunshine. So on March 24th, my birthday, we, I drove, mayor drove up later, but I drove to Tallahassee. Quite the drive, but it was well worth it. There's a picture of myself and Michael Blake, who's the president and mayor of Cocoa. He is the president of Florida League of Cities. But again, it was an engaged group of people. They spoke and said, I think, Mayor, 325 of us, mayors and council members and, you know, commissioners from around the state, that's the largest group of participants they've had on their Legislative Action Days, and it was a busy day. I've got, I have put a notice out about the Live Local bill that's being pushed through. Mayor had that one. You had some interest in some others. There was a lot of action going on. It was swinging by as fast and furious. On the 27th, and we got home on the 26th. On the 27th, Cherry Lake Prep, there was a Cherry Lake Prep Strategy Meeting for the Town Hall Huddle coming up, and so we had the staff in there that's going to be working with us to get all the messaging out about Cherry Lake Prep, traffic, the light on Wilson Lake, and 27, there's a lot going on. So, when we went up as a city to go to Tallahassee, Wilson Island was the project we wanted to talk about, and there's been some momentum, some traction on that. There was a conference call with several individuals from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, myself, Tim Maslow, and Andrew Landis were on the call. They're very versed in the background of Wilson Island, certainly far more knowledgeable than I am, but I'm learning day by day. There are some future efforts that could benefit us in keeping that conservation. They provided some information to Andrew and Tim that they're following up on currently. So as that continues to move forward, we'll have more messaging on that, just waiting to see how some of that starts to shake out. There will be another call, we just haven't scheduled it yet. Founder's Day was the 29th, and we had a wonderful breakfast with the clergy from Groveland. It was uplifting. We were at, again, the Taylorville Cemetery, the Oak Union Colored Cemetery of Taylorville, and it was wonderful. There was a, Senator TruNo was there, so there was just a lot of activity, and it was just a wonderful, beautiful day out in the sun. And then we were at Founder's Day at Lake David. Again, there's a lot that goes on at Lake David. It was a wonderful annual event. I think everyone had a full afternoon enjoying the music, the food trucks, the entertainment, friends and neighbors. There was something for everyone. So I spent the 5th, again, at the Groveland Market. I like to go to the market. I like to buy my sourdough bread there. But I didn't stay there too long, because I had to hop over to guess where? Lake David. You guessed it. Good. They had the adaptive water skiing event. Now, I'm going to tell you, this is quite the event. There are people of all ages and a variety of disabilities that Anne's Angels works with and brings in wakeboards that have been retrofitted for these individuals to be able to sit in, kind of a metal frame. And these individuals, many of them, most of them in wheelchairs, get the opportunity to water-ski on Lake David, something they may never have had the opportunity to do. They're flanked by two very talented skiers, because when that boat goes, there's three toe ropes. Two people that are flanking the rider on the wakeboard and the rope on the wakeboard. And those two skiers flanking those riders are up and on it. I mean, and they've got their hands on that chair, and they've got that individual, and they make a loop of the entire lake before they come back, drop their ropes, and they coast into shore or, you know, to the dock there. I have to tell you, I just, there's no words for the beauty of what was going on with those families and their ability to enjoy our beautiful Lake David. And again, they're not just Groveland residents. These people are coming from everywhere. So keep your eyes posted for all the fun that goes on in Lake David. That was the third water skiing event on a Saturday down there. I mean, it's just amazing. Come down and enjoy Lake David. And I know you all are happy when I say, that's all I got.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I participated in the South Lake Chamber Board meeting. The next day, I went to the breakfast, and here's probably a little lone tip that you all probably don't know. Last year, Governor DeSantis signed a bill whereby the 4th Thursday of March is a state holiday for the Tuskegee Airmen here in the state of Florida. So I attended an event for the Tuskegee Airmen over in Orlando, and also went to, participated in the Founder's Day event, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just, I think you've heard where I've been from other reports recently. Just, if anybody here wants to be on my mailing list for what's going on in Tallahassee, please get me your card or get me your email address. There's several bills that are up in the next couple of weeks. One is to abolish the CRA, and we were told that was a dead subject when it got to the Senate, and the Senate voted eight to four to move it on, just the day before yesterday. So that might require some further lobbying. There's some other things up there, but that CRA really is a hard thing. And if you think people can't make a difference, the comments on the lengthening the Child Work Day was really hurt up there, and they voted it down. Remember, they were going to let kids work till midnight on school days and work eight hours on school days, and that got defeated. But there are other things coming up that could really impact our city, kind of taking the zoning away. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Feig to maybe get that in a little detail in the next, Live Local. Well, let's do it at the next, because I think we're running a little late, but...
Sure, I'll be happy to. I'll, no microphone, I'll be happy to talk about Live Local and that really, be more than happy to drill down in that.
Yeah, because it could really, where somebody can put an eight-story building on any piece of property in the city and there's no zoning requirements, really hurts. Come right up next to your house and put one in. So, and it was supposed to be dead, but they voted it, the Commerce Committee voted it to go on to the, so I don't know where it stands, but if you want to keep up to date, so you can click on and send a note to our representatives, I'd really appreciate getting your information. Lastly, I'd really like to thank the city manager and his staff for the Founder's Day celebration, but really the cemetery celebration that morning was very emotional and very nicely done. I know that in the background, there was some talk that I've heard is real, that the veterans of, what do they call it, at Trilogy? Tova?
Tova, Trilogy Orlando. Sorry, I thought it was...
The Trilogy Orlando?
Have...
Tova, T-O-V-A, the Trilogy Orlando Veterans Association. Sorry.
The important thing there is that they've committed to operating our cemetery just like one of the federal cemeteries, and will take responsibility for wreaths and take flags and honor that on Memorial Day and other holidays, just like, because we have World War I veterans there. So with that said, I got to say, go Gators, and turn it over to our staff report.
I do briefly. So we are currently, we have pending litigation. It's in the American Arbitration Association, set for hearing in September. The case is Tryon Clearview Group LLC versus the city of Groveland, and we are in need of a closed session meeting with the council. We received a settlement offer from Tryon Clearview Group, and so we are asking for a closed session meeting with the council, scheduled on April 14th, 2025, at 7:15 PM in this building, the E.L. Purrier Building, 243 South Lake Avenue, Groveland, Florida. We anticipate an hour. The purpose is to discuss litigation strategy and litigation costs, and the case number Those present in the closed session meeting is Mayor Keith Keough, Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines, Councilmember Amy Jo Carroll, Councilmember Judith Feig, Councilmember Mike Radzick, City Manager Mike Hine, and myself as city attorney. It will be recorded by a court reporter who will be present during the closed session meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hine? Go Gators. Okay, without any further discussion, meeting adjourned. Okay, without any further discussion, meeting adjourned.